Okay, okay. Thank you all for being here and your patience. We'll call this regular meeting of the City of Los Alamos City Council to order. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Protem Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Chirico.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Okay, before I go into the pledge, I've been doing this this year, I think I only messed up once, but I'm gonna ask, I'll introduce our staff that reports to us. We have Wendy Quintanara, the city clerk, Michael Dought, our city attorney, we have Les Johnson, our interim city manager, and would you introduce your staff that's here? And let's recognize them that provide the service to the city and businesses here.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Councilmembers. For staff in attendance tonight, we have our police chief, Eric Nunez, we have our finance director, Eric Hendrickson, we have recreation manager, Ron Noda, recreation manager, Emlyn Noda, we also have our fire chief, Ron Roberts, our city engineer, David Hunt, engineer Chris Kelly, and associate planner, Tom Oliver.
Great, thank you. And with that, we'll go into the pledge of allegiance, and if you would remain standing for the invocation right after that, would be appreciated.
We'll be deferring to our special guest, Colonel Ducey, to lead us. Thank you, sir.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Gracious in heavenly spirit, just thank you for this season, and also for the gifts that you have granted to us up here, the gifts, the talents, the experiences, and the perspectives that we bring to the council and to the city, as we guide our city into the future, and as we provide services to our residents and our business owners, as we do the people's work. Thank you for all that. We thank you for those that serve under the flag, putting their lives at danger in the police, fire, the services, the medical providers, we just thank you for their gifts as well. And mostly for the staff here, we thank you for the hard work that they do to keep this place what it is, as great as it is. In great name we pray, amen. Okay, coming up, I guess we have presentations. I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem at this point, right? Oh, is it?
Yeah.
We're gonna do B first?
Yes. B first.
Okay. I think I have an order. Please join me in front. Do him last, I guess. Okay, so, item 5B, we have a few recognitions, and tonight we'd like to thank and recognize those that are creating quality of life partners in our city, and due the generosity of these organizations. The city is able to offer high-quality community events, such as the Winter Wonderland, Race on the Base, the Fourth of July Fireworks Spectacular, Serve Los Al, and many more. Many of these events are free to attend, and could not be done without our sponsor partners. We want to thank you for your sponsorship. So in recognition, we'd like to recognize AYSO Region 159, are you here? Seeing no one here, we'll get that to them. Friday Night Lights Youth Football, any, please come on up. Thank you. You have a certificate, and if you'd like to say a few words about the organization, we'd like to hear from you. Hmm? Okay. All right. Next, we have the Los Alamos Senior Club. Do we have a representative? Great, come on up, please. Would you like to say something about the Senior Club?
Yes.
Please. Could you introduce your name?
My name is Phyllis Pierce, and the Senior Club is for people that are, sometimes they wait all week to be there, and it's really a good thing for everybody, especially in our age group. So I want to thank the community center for everything they've done for us. Emlyn, Ron, thank you so much.
Next, we have Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital Long Beach, that's dedicated exclusively to the quality and compassionate care of kids and expecting mothers. Hi, thank you for being here, thank you for your support. Do you want to say something, please? Yeah, please talk about your office here.
Well, you know, it's been a pleasure working with Emlyn and her team. It's been wonderful, and I like to say that Miller Children's and Women's is the best kept secret, and we don't want to keep it a secret anymore, and Emlyn and your team are helping us do that, so thank you so much.
Thank you. So next, we have Republic Services, an industry leader providing reliable and responsible recycling and waste disposal. Manny, thanks, introduce your name, please.
I was told I have to say something, and so, on behalf of Republic Services, I couldn't be more thankful for our partnership, and with all of the staff, between Les, and Emlyn, and Ron, thank you for everything. We're part of this community, part of this town. Highlight of the year for me by far was Serve Los Al. We brought our entire management department out, and gave back to an elderly community member, and it brought our entire team together, and that's because of Los Alamos. Thank you.
Thank you. Southland Credit, I saw Tom here, please come on up. Treating Los Alamos and our member owners with exceptional service since 1936. Thank you, Tom. Want to say a few words, Tom? Please.
Hello, I'm Tom Lent, the CEO of Southland Credit Union, and I live in this community, our headquarters in this community, and we love this community, and we just are so grateful to the city, and we hope you come and bank with us, so thank you.
Thank you. And then, the, I guess, the organization we recognize, well, announced Friday Night Lights, AYSO 159, and Grading Pacific, who is unable to be here, no one from Grading Pacific, but we want to thank them for their sponsorship. So thank you all, I guess it'll be time for a photo, please? Let's all squeeze in. Okay, next will be the presentation to the Los Alamos Volunteer Program Scholarship recipients, and we have three of them, please. So, the, the Los Alamos Volunteer Program provides youths ages 11 through 17 years old an opportunity to earn service hours while gaining valuable work skills and knowledge of all, in all fun environment while giving back to the city of Los Alamos and the surrounding communities. The LAVP Scholarship was created to offer three members of the LAVP program assistance to complete their educational goals. All applicants had to fulfill minimum requirements and submit an application. All, the Los Alamos Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Commission chose those recipients of the Gold, Silver, and Bronze Scholarship at their November 6 meeting. So, I saw, is Alex here?
Alex, right.
Come on up, anybody else from Parks here? Tanya, please come on up and help us recognize these awardees that you did the judging for. I don't know, I'm gonna give you the microphone, Tanya, do you want, you want the mic to announce? Dangerous, would you, would you mind? Okay, please, let's announce the recipients.
I will gladly announce our recipients. So we start with our Bronze Scholarship recipient for $250 is awarded to Brooklyn Davis. Congratulations, my dear. A little background on her, she's currently a freshman at Los Alamos High School and has been an LAVP member for two years. She has so far accumulated 195 service hours, and her Spanish teacher, Ms. Avina, describes Brooklyn as hardworking, dedicated, and kind. Congratulations, Ms. Avina.
All right, you keep it, you keep it.
All right, Alex. So our Silver winner wasn't able to be here, but we will still acknowledge Travis Kimbrell. He was awarded $500. He's a junior at the high school, he's been an LAVP member for six years, and he has accumulated 270 service hours. And last but not least, we have our Gold Scholarship recipient for $750 goes to Norma Peña. Come on up. That's right, mama, that's right. Buying all your books for a month. Norma is a senior at the high school, and she has been an LAVP member for five years, and has accumulated 705 service hours. She is a member of the girls' golf team, and her math teacher, Ms. Strong, describes Norma as hardworking and smart. Congratulations. Brooklyn's dad.
Wait, 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 recipients only, then we'll do the dad. Thank you for your help, Alex, thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. I know, but, okay. we have a 10-year employee who is, I think, was it 10-year, David Hunt, would you please come up here? So Dave Hunt's our city engineer. And, Dave is retiring? Is that, is that the?
I am.
Okay. Yeah, I know, and it's like, I'm envious, because I don't get to do that for a few more years, but anyways, Dave, we have this plaque for you, and the certificate, and we do want to thank Dave for his service to the city. We, we use him sparingly, but we get a lot of work out of him, and so we just want to thank you for that. And you want to say something to the community?
Sure. Yeah, this has been a great city to work in. I actually plan to be here about two years, where, as a consultant, you kind of help out as needed going. It just kept going and going, and I've enjoyed it ever since, and a lot of things have been happening around here in 10 years, so it's been a great, great pleasure in my career.
Thank you, David, yeah. Thanks. Okay, with that, I guess I have to hand this over to the Mayor Protem.
Okay, we have some presentations for the mayor, starting with the Office of Senator Tom Unberg, David Ochoa.
On behalf of the California State Senate, I am proud to award the Certificate of Recognition to Warren Kusamoto. He has served the City of Los Alamos with distinction and a commitment to service over his time as mayor. His tenure was marked by fiscal sustainability and continued economic growth for the city, and we thank him for his service over the past year as mayor.
Next, from the Office of Assemblyman Tyler Deep, Ryan Billings.
Mayor Kusamoto, it's my pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of the Assemblymen to thank you for your service as the mayor. I know that entails a lot of extra things you have to go to, and things you have to make speeches for, and all that, so we, the Assemblymen asked me to be here this evening, and thank you for your service, and that's important, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, from the Office of Orange County Supervisor Michelle Steele, and certain to win most Christmas dress, Tim Whitaker.
Sir, thank you.
Well, first, before I present to you, Mr. Mayor, is, I'm wearing this, not in repentance, because I was ready. For Winter Wonderland, as you know, there was a threat of rain. I live down by South Coast Plaza. At around 4 o'clock, it's raining cats and dogs down there, and I'm thinking, eh, nah, it's not gonna happen, so I stayed home. And then I come to find out, it happened. God opened up the clouds, and you guys had a great event, and I'm sorry that I missed it on behalf of the vice chair. So, for two reasons, I'm here today dressed like this. One is to recognize the spirit of the season, and another, it's fitting for Mayor Kusamoto. He works hard behind the scenes, all of your city council does. The vice chairman has enjoyed working with you, sir. You are just a champion of your city, of your people. You've done a fantastic job in your leadership capacity as mayor of the city, and she just can't thank you enough for all that you've done. We see him everywhere, he's not just in your city, he's advocating on behalf of your city all over the place. Doesn't matter what city I go to, I seem to see him and his lovely wife all the time, everywhere. They are great ambassadors for Los Alamos. So, job well done, sir. On behalf of the vice chairman of board of supervisors, here is a framed certificate in honor of your great service to your city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, we've had an upgrade. On my notes, it says from the Joint Forces Training Base, Master Sergeant Bobby Chavez, but instead we get two colonels. Now, I'm sure when the master sergeants hear this, they'll say, that's about a fair trade, but we, we know it's a step up.
Appreciate it, thank you. Mayor, this is another for your love me, all your certificate of appreciation, but really, I just want to say, I don't need to read the words on here, but from every soldier, sailor, airman, that begraces the presence of Joint Force Training Base Los Alamos, from civilian to volunteer, we appreciate all your efforts in strengthening the ties between this city and the base. I think we're a great example of what can be done, and as we go forward to expanding that, your presence at the historic change of command earlier this year, Fourth of July Race on the Base, and the airshow, are just some great examples of what it means for us to see elected officials come forth and participate, and make that valuable presence known. And we're gonna miss you in the title of mayor, but we know we're gonna keep seeing you on the base, right? And you have, not only yourself, but you have a great team that we really enjoy working with, and getting further in the relations between us and the city. Thank you.
It's honored mine, thank you.
And one more thing, can't just have that, so, every commander, you know, has a challenge coin, and so on behalf of everyone again, thank you, and we look forward to the.
And from across the border, the mayor, from the City of Cypress, Mary Ellen Yark.
I'm here on behalf of Cypress City Council, I'm the new mayor Protem, so I know the hell you've, oh, no, the, we've been very lucky to have a good relationship despite your, your mayor Protem. We've had a good relationship with your city, and it's important that we work together. And I just wanted to say congratulations on your full 10 years you've been with this city, very impressive.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
All righty. Oh, picture.
And doing double duty, representing Republic Resources and the Chamber of Commerce, Manny Guevara.
Thank you again. Well, unlike our wonderful volunteer students, they got a check this evening. Unfortunately, when you complete your year as mayor, you don't necessarily get a check for all those wonderful volunteer hours that you put in. It sometimes feels, I'm sure, like a thankless job, but know that you are truly thanked, appreciated. On behalf of the Board of Directors at the Chamber of Commerce, thank you for your support of our organization, your involvement in the state of the city, you're at our table at the gallow this year. Thank you for everything, truly appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate everything. I have one that I can, so. So, I do want to call my wife up here, because I couldn't do this without her support, and there was something I'd been really neglecting to do, so, my wife Judy, and she, she really is, really, truly, the better half, and I do have a challenge coin here that I get to give to her, because I've been holding off, but I do want to just recognize her, so this, honey, this is for you.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it. Pleasure.
Dean. Yeah? Are we taking a break now? We're gonna take a short break for the, for the cake?
We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting back to order as soon as, Tim, bye, Tim. Thank you, the meeting's called back to order. Next up on the agenda is item 6, it is, the door's open, oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. I do have two-speaker cards, but certainly if you want to speak, you know, don't let the lack of a card stop you. And I have, it looks like my neighbor, Mr. Vardeman, you want to come forward and speak with us, sir?
As you know, I live right at where the pump, the flood control pump is, and I understand that is now to be replaced, and I'd like to give my best thanks to everyone who had any, any part of, of replacing that pump, which has needed it for 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you, and then, thanks to Mr. Vardeman, and so, David, city engineer, could you give us a little bit of an update of where we are on that? I know we just awarded the contract, but if you can, for the sake of the public.
Yes, you awarded the contract in November, and since then, we got all the contractor's paperwork, you know, with all the contract, insurance, and all that, so all that's in there. We're trying to schedule a kickoff meeting with him on, hopefully, Thursday of this week, and get the things rolling, you know, give him a notice to proceed, so we can order all the parts and get all the stuff going. So that's where we're at.
Do you have an idea of the schedule about when we can expect completion?
Typically, it's gonna take about three months with all the parts and stuff they have to do.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Thanks, Mr. Vardeman, for being here. Next up, we have Linda Townsend, you want to come forward and speak, please?
Hi, I'm here to, thank you, Your Honor, I'm here to speak just in favor of removing the parking restrictions in New Dutch Haven and Carrier Row, and I also wanted to call attention to the fact that the maps that were included were not the latest, because the Carrier Row neighborhood did submit an additional petition at a recent meeting that brought the percentage for Saratoga up to at least 75%, if not beyond that, and we're hoping that this will be the last meeting that they will remove the parking, and we're hoping to hear that the signs will come down really soon.
Thank you for being here. Okay, any other members of the public, please come forward.
Is it okay if I?
Please.
Hi, my name is Pam Serushian, I've lived here since 1982, in Los Alamos, in Carrier Row, and this isn't my first time being here, but it's the first time I've been here with, it's been a long time, probably 20 years since I've been up here. We, I'm also here to talk about the parking permit situation, and although I really appreciate that, hopefully you're gonna take care of that tonight, there is a little bit of a question in my mind about two things. One is why we really had to go to so much work. I had to get 18 people's signature on my street. It was very difficult to find all those people at home, and I went back over and over and over to get like the last couple, so that I could get a petition to turn in, when, as you can see by looking at my street on a random day, I just went out and took a picture, there were three cars parked on my street, and that's typical. There is no parking problem, there never has been a parking problem in all of these many years, and yet we've had those parking permit required to signs up in front of my house for years and years. They haven't been enforced, they were enforced for a little while when my kids were teenagers. It was a disaster, because my kids' teenage friends would come in, grab a parking permit, put it on their car, and drive away. And they would do it over and over and over again, and I had to keep going back to the police department over and over again, and get new, new parking hangers, which they charged me for, by the way. And I, I mean, it was ridiculous, I was in there every other day, because I had three teenage girls, and they all had boyfriends, to be honest, and girlfriends, that were there all the time. So, I'm glad it hasn't been enforced for all these years. I'm sorry that it suddenly started to need to be enforced, and I do understand how that happened, but it's a really ridiculous thing to have parking permits in a place that the typical street has like three cars parked on it at any one time. The second problem, and I have, so I don't understand really why we had to go to so much, so much work, why didn't the city just take them down? You know, why did we have to go and get all these petitions? And as I say that, there are some little parts that, nobody got petitions for those, and they're still, they should still come down too. So, there's a little part of green next to my house, I'm on Langley, on the corner, and there's a little part of green that nobody covered that, nobody, nobody petitioned to have those parking permits removed, and they're still out there, and they're gonna be out there, I guess, unless the city decides to remove them without getting a petition. That means that if my friends come for a party and park like around the corner, they're still gonna need parking permits around there on that corner, and I won't have any, I can't even move my car around there and let them park in my driveway, because I won't have parking permits anymore, because my street won't need it. There's no need for them. We don't have any need for parking permits in Carrier Row or New Dutch Haven, there's no parking problem, there's lots and lots and lots and lots and lots of parking. So, I, I feel like the city could just look at it and go, yeah, there was, there was a question about this years ago, about why we needed it, there was a particular problem should have been addressed in some other way, other than parking permit requirements, and it was a problem with one business, whose employees were all parking up and down Saratoga, sometimes ran in front of my house, but that's been gone for a decade or more, like that's, there hasn't been a problem for a really long time. So, I'm glad it's being addressed, I'm glad we found out how to address it, but I'm hoping that you guys can just look at Carrier Row and New Dutch Haven and just blanket, eliminate all the parking permit requirements in those areas. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close oral communications, and next would be council announcements. Anybody wish to go first on announcements?
I can go ahead and start. First of all, I'd like to extend the best wishes to everyone for the upcoming Christmas holidays, also for Hanukkah and the New Year. This is our last meeting for the month of December, and we're gonna miss the opportunity to pass that on. On events and activities, I attended the Westcom Joint Powers Authority Board Meeting on November the 19th. On November the 20th, I attended the State of the Orange County Sheriff's Office, getting an update on things they've been doing. I have donated that money to the Precious Life Shelter here in Los Alamos. I attended the 10th Annual Economic Summit for Southern California with Interim City Manager Les Johnson in Los Angeles on December the 5th. That was put on by the Southern California Association of Governments. Also, on December the 6th, I'm sorry, that was December the 5th. On December the 6th, I attended the graduation ceremony for Class 24 for the Sunburst Youth Academy. As they have in the past, just an absolute honor to be there and hear what the kids have accomplished and what their goals are from the standpoint of moving on in their lives. Joined my colleagues on November, on December the 7th for Winter Wonderland at St. Isador. Didn't get into any ice or snowball throwing contests. I met with city staff on December the 10th regarding our ongoing concerns over physical sustainability and provided some additional discussion information for them to work on. On the following day, on December the 8th, I attended the holiday party for the 79th Theater Sustainability Command at Joint Forces Training Basis, was for their families. I met with, or again, on, I joined council members honoring the various boards and commissioners that we have, serving the city as volunteers. That was on the 12th. And on 13th, which was last Friday night, I attended the Santa's Workshop at Joint Forces Training Base, which was for military families and children. And that was put on by USO and a number of nonprofits in the community that stepped up to make sure the military children had a good Christmas. And I'd like to also kind of thank Mayor Kuzamoto for his term as mayor. I think he's done an outstanding job leading the city. It's been a pleasure working with him, and I look forward to moving on next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, you want to go?
Sure. Thank you. I attended the American Legion Annual Fundraiser Breakfast, which was a great event. Took the whole family there for a worthy cause. Attended Winter Wonderland. It was a very nice event. Thank you to Ron and Emmeline and Megan and their entire team for doing a great job, just like they always do. Your hard work is noticed, it's appreciated, so thank you. I attended the annual Commissioner Dinner in honor of our commissioners. I know we have a couple of them here tonight. It was a nice event, nice way to say thank you to our commissioners for the time and effort that they put in into being involved in helping our city. And so thank you to those commissioners and also to those of you being reappointed tonight to three-year terms. I attended the monthly Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District Meeting. We had our first positive West Nile virus mosquito result in Los Alamos, but luckily, we're reaching the end of the mosquito season, and so that should die down quickly. The Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District is really doing some interesting things, particularly next year, some efforts to try to reduce the new mosquitoes that we have in Southern California, the 80s egypti mosquitoes. They're doing some, some novel approaches, including some taken by Google. They've tried different ways of reducing the population, including in Fresno, and they've had some really good success. So I'm hoping to be back in 2020 with a report on that and some promising results there. So hopefully, we, we can do something about these really annoying ankle-biting mosquitoes. They're the ones that bite all day long. They bite you multiple times, and they don't stop. So hopefully, there will be improvement there. And I just also want to wish everyone a safe holiday season, a wonderful 2020. We on the council will do everything we can in 2020 to preserve our community and help our wonderful city. So thank you, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year.
All right. I attended two graduations for Orange County Fire Authority in the same day, Academy 48, which were 34 new firefighters, and then Academy 49, which were lateral firefighters. We have 70, about 70 new firefighters now serving Orange County. I think one was a female, maybe two. And I'm telling you, I did that stuff. It's hard. So that was, that was great to see. We need firefighters, and they're just going to be a tremendous asset. Attended Winter Wonderland, and once again, the Parks and Rucks pulled it off. They had snow falling, they had Santa arriving in a fire truck, they had homemade tamales, you name it. We had our Republic Services giving free rides on a trash truck, which you can't go do that anywhere. So that was kind of cool. So once again, that was just great, just that hometown feel. We could be a Hallmark movie. I think we should probably try that next year. Attended the Commissioner Dinner. You know, we have 24 volunteers that serve on a various commissions, from traffic to planning to park and rec to personnel. Sometimes their agendas are much bigger than ours. They go through the meat of the stuff, whether it's looking at zoning codes, whether it's picking movies for the summer movies in the park, trying to fix traffic, which as soon as they can find a solution for that, let me know. But they spend countless hours doing this at no, no charge to the city. It's just strictly for their love of the city and wanting to take some of their expertise and bringing it into our city. So I just thank you for that. And the dinner was a small token, but our, the gratefulness for what they do, so we get to actually not be here every single day, is appreciated. And with that, I would just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and a fabulous 2020.
Mayor Protan?
Thank you. Good news, the Sanitation District has announced that they will be scaling back on this big dig between Cattella and Los Alamos. So that probably only bothers for a year and a half now, so it's, it's going to, it's still going to be ugly, but it's improved. I was able to attend the Best of Los Allo Awards and the Commissioner Dinner. Several others have spoken about the Commissioners Dinner, but a thank you to the Commissioners. You know, I think it's a rewarding thing to be a Commissioner. You can tell by the fact that seven of the eight people whose terms are up resigned up. So it's, it's got to be, you know, good to be given back to the community. And it really is the heart and soul of the community. And if you ever get a chance, I would encourage you to do so. Also, would like to close and wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year.
Thank you. And so for my report out, I missed about half the month on travel again, but I want to thank my colleagues for taking care of the Winter Wonderland and the volunteer meals that they served. So meals to the volunteers, appreciate their pitching in for that. I did get to attend the American Legion Pancake Breakfast as well, probably a different time than Mark, but what a thrill that was, a great breakfast and a worthy cause. And then we went back to the regular meeting, and I think they ended up raising quite a bit of money, and they donated 1,500 of that to the Marine Corps Toys for Tots. So that was their fundraiser, and it was just amazing. And these are just, you know, patriots that just have a heart for service and, you know, it's, a lot of what they're doing is fundraising, but they're giving out of, I think, love and not trying to shake down their members and just trying to do good for the community and just give back, like, like Richard was saying about the other volunteers that we have. The other thing I got to do, it was more of a private event. It was the Orange County Tesla Club, and they need a place to have the unveiling of the Tesla truck. And so I asked the city if I can rent the community center. So I want to let the public know, you can always do that. They did it at the very last minute, and I was able to pay the fee. And it was just really a fun event. We, Emmeline and Ron, the staff there, was so accommodating to us. We brought the food in and had the projector going, and it was just a fun time, and it was a great venue, great parking. And I end up trying to put a deposit on a Tesla truck, and I end up buying three, so I don't know if that's going to work out. Yeah, I have to figure that one out. But anyways, I do want to wish the public, you know, members of the community, happy holidays. And again, thank, thank you for allowing me to do this, this honor for the last year. It's just been a real thrill, as always. So with that, we're going to move on to item number eight, the City Manager Report. Les?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, before I go through my items, I'd like to provide an opportunity for Recreation Manager Ron Noda to make an announcement.
Yes, I just want to encourage the community to sign up for Race on the Base. The Race on the Base is scheduled for February 21 and 22 of 2020. Visit raceonthebase.com to register. Thank you.
I'd want to just acknowledge our staff and, not just our staff, but the volunteers and the numerous people that took part in making Winter Wonderland just a great success. It was very well attended, a lot of, a lot of smiles, a lot of kids having a tremendous amount of fun. But it takes a small army of people behind the scenes to make that happen, months of preparation, tremendous amount of effort putting it together and then tearing it down late into the evening, and Ron and Emma especially. But I know there's a, again, a small army of folks behind them that helped make that happen, and just thank them for another successful year. Wanted to also remind everyone that our City Hall main offices will be closed December 23rd to 27th. Obviously, the police department will still remain open, and there'll be various recreation programs. The main City Hall office will be closed that week. Also, I wanted just to put a reminder also that we have a Physical Sustainability Workshop coming up on Tuesday, the 14th of January at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And finally, just again, want to wish, on behalf of the staff and myself, wish each of you a very Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll go on to item number nine, the warrants. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Gross. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Kuzamoto.
Aye.
Mayor Protan Murphy.
Aye.
Councilmember Chirco.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Consent calendar. So all consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Is there anything that anyone wishes to pull? Seeing none, we'll ask for a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Chirco, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay, let's see, we're going to go on to public hearings, 11A. And this is the one that the folks who hear the request to remove permit parking in all streets, in all streets in New Dutch Haven neighborhood. I'll look for a staff report, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Certain streets within the New Dutch neighborhood are currently within a neighborhood parking permit program. That program was established back in 1981. Historically, the program has not been consistently enforced, as we've heard earlier this evening. The program was originally implemented due to parking impacts associated with the Los Alamos racetrack, as there were patrons of the racetrack due to a feeby in charge at that time that were actually parking within the neighborhood and impacting those residents. The city's permit parking program was reviewed by the Traffic Commission in 2018 and 2019. So all five of the parking permit programs were reviewed and considered. There was a joint meeting of the City Council and Traffic Commission held this past June, and that resulted in directing staff to enforce our existing programs. Following the noticing of enforcement that occurred later this, that this year, earlier this year, residents subsequently submitted four separate petitions requesting removal of parking from Bunker Hill Drive, Bennington Street, Antetnam Street, and Mendora Street. The Traffic Commission considered those petitions during their October meeting, and as a result, unanimously recommended for the City Council to terminate the entire New Dutch Haven neighborhood permit parking program. That has subsequently resulted in a public hearing being scheduled and noticed for this evening, and a resolution has been prepared to represent the recommended action. And that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So moved.
Before we do that, public hearing, Wendy? Yeah, so before we do that, I'd like to go ahead and open up the public hearing for public comment. Any member of the public wish to speak on this? The limit will be three minutes. Please come forward. Thank you.
George Townsend from Mendora Street. And I just have one question. If this is approved, will the signs come down? And will the signs come down from Siboney also?
So if you just make a quick, you know?
Yeah, the, I guess the response would be yes. As to exactly when we'll be scheduling that, it'll probably take a few months to remove them, but all of the signs within the New Dutch neighborhood would be removed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else wish to speak on this item? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public hearing and bring it back to the council. Again, any discussion? I guess I do have one. Is it possible maybe just to bag them? So I don't know if that would help with the enforcement. That'd be something you can look at solving. I'm not going to ask for it, but consider it.
Sir, and Mayor, just to note that we have not been enforcing those.
Understand.
And depending on the outcome of tonight, we'll, we'll go forward accordingly.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Is there any discussion or motion?
So moved. Second.
Gross, Murphy. Okay, all those, we don't need roll call, right? Wendy, just, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Seeing none, passes 5-0. Okay, thank you. So it's.
Can I just ask a point of clarification?
Sure.
One of the speakers asked about a section of green. Oh, we're going to green. We're going to Carrier, Carrier Row next. Okay.
Okay, okay. Next item, let me see, will be item 11B, another public hearing. And if, we can have the staff report again on this one?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, certain streets within the Carrier Row neighborhood are currently within a neighborhood permit parking program. That program was established in 2004. And again, similar to the other neighborhood, the program has not been consistently enforced. But that program was originally implemented due to a, due to parking impacts that were associated with a business that was located on Cattella and Saratoga. That business has since moved out of the area. The parking permit program again was reviewed by the Traffic Commission in 18 and 19. There was a joint meeting held earlier this year of the council and the commission that resulted in staff again moving forward with enforcement of that program. As a result, there were three separate petitions requesting removal of parking from Saratoga Drive, Langley Drive, and Green Avenue that were submitted to the city. The Traffic Commission considered the petitions during their October meeting, and as a result, has unanimously recommended for the City Council to terminate the Carrier Row neighborhood permit parking program. So the hearing has been scheduled for your consideration this evening, and a resolution has also been prepared in accordance with the recommendation. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the, open up the public hearing. Any member of the public wish to speak on this item? Thank you.
Thank you for including green in that. I didn't know about that. And the maps that I had did not include green. It just showed Saratoga and Langley, so that's good news. And I'm glad that the way that it's worded, it includes all of Carrier Row. That's good news, too. The question of when will this stop being enforced, even, even though I, we get like word through the police department that they're saying like it's not being enforced, people have been ticketed even during this time when it was supposedly not being enforced. And for my feeling about it is I've had to go ahead and go and get the permits when I have more than three people or somebody's gone off with a permit, is I'm still having to go and ask the police department for those permits because I don't feel confident that when there's a sign they're saying that there's going to be, you know, regulated permit parking, I don't feel comfortable to just ignore that on the word of someone who, you know, just happened to mention it. I went over to the police department, and they told me that indeed, if there's a sign they're regulating it, then it will be regulated and that it's fair game to be ticketed. So I got told that by two different people in the police department just standing at the window. And then the other second thing is, please, please bag the signs. Like, just look at, let's get rid of them. Like, why, months, I almost, I almost like was staggered by the idea that it could take months more for this to happen. Why, I got to tell you, if that sign gets backed into, you're not going to replace it, right? Because there's one at the end of my driveway. And this needs, these needs to go. They need to go now. Like, they're really a huge inconvenience. And there is somebody who did that. I don't know if they did it on purpose, but there is one down somewhere. And I'm not threatening to do it, but I'm just saying, like, come on, three months, really? Like, let's just put the bags over them and get rid of them when you have time to get rid of the actual signs and make it look nice. But let's bag them up now.
Right, thank, thank you for your input. Appreciate you being here. So get some, get some info for the, go to do what, Les, right? Thank you. Please come forward. Thank you.
I'm Julie Decker. I live in Saratoga. So what do your percentages mean? 54 percent means what?
I'm sorry, that percentage actually ended up being 75 percent. But it represents the number of properties within the yellow area and how many signed it's.
Right, because I know we have at least. And then the other second thing is, please, please bag the signs, like just let's get rid of them. Like why, months, I almost like was staggered by the idea that it could take months more for this to happen. Why, I got to tell you, if that sign gets backed into, you're not going to replace it, right? Because there's one at the end of my driveway, and this needs, these needs to go. They need to go now. Like they're really a huge inconvenience. And there is somebody who did that. I don't know if they did it on purpose, but there is one down somewhere. And I'm not threatening to do it, but I'm just saying, like, come on, three months, really? Like, let's just put the bags over them and get rid of them when you have time to get rid of the actual signs and make it look nice, but let's bag them up now.
Right, thank you for your input. Appreciate you being here. So got some info for the, go to do what, Les, right? Thank you. Please come forward. Thank you.
I'm Julie Decker. I live in Saratoga. So what do your percentages mean? Fifty-four percent means what?
I'm sorry, that percentage actually ended up being 75%. But it represents the number of properties within the yellow area and how many signed.
Right, because I know we have at least 75%.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back here to the council. Is there any discussion or is there a motion?
So moved.
Now, I'd like to say something first. The, I want to thank the Traffic Commission. We actually, between 11A and 11B, we caused them a lot of extra work along the way, but they did an excellent job here, and thank them for their efforts on our behalf.
And getting to the Carrier Row thing, I live on Saratoga. I'm on the very south side of it, so we get a lot of parking for the base, but we're kind of used to it. And if soldiers want to park in our street, I'm cool with that. The reason that this went through this process is because when the Traffic Commission first started, we couldn't get any input from the residents. I think we got 11 people to respond to any kind of survey or anything, and so they really wanted to make sure that they were doing the will of the people. So it took a little bit longer and it was much more painful, but you guys spoke loud and clear, and thank you.
Okay, so is there a motion for this?
So moved.
Murphy? Second.
Chirco, Murphy, Chirco, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Thank you all for participating in this. So next we have 11C, which is a public hearing again, right, Wendy?
Yes.
And it's about the general, well, I'm going to turn over staff. Do you have a staff report on 11C, please, Les?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, council members. The applicant, Mr. Banner, submitted an application for a general plan amendment and zoning map amendment for four parcels that are located at 4281 Catella Avenue. The subject site consists of approximately 3.9 acres and is developed with an 81,000 square foot two-story office building and 288 associated parking spaces. This is located within the Planlight Industrial Zoning District. This district is intended to foster and support light industrial land uses. The professional offices are allowed within this zoning district. Medical office uses are permitted if incidental to an allowed industrial use. Different businesses have historically occupied this building, which was clearly constructed to serve as an office building. The mix of office use that currently occupies the building has remained generally consistent for the past several years. Medical office use currently occupies about 24, 25% of that office space. Since 2012, staff has recognized the existing medical office use and allowed that percentage amount of medical use to remain, but to not increase. The applicant has filed these two applications in order to ultimately allow for the zoning to be changed from Planlight Industrial to Commercial Professional Office. So I can get to, trying to give a couple of maps here to show you. Wanted to point out that properties to the south along Catella Avenue, that just flanking Catella, are also in that Commercial Office zoning district right now. Considering the request, staff finds that the amendment and ultimate change of zone is compatible with the surrounding properties and is a reasonable extension of that zoning district from the existing properties to the south. The only concern that staff has was with regards to parking. As I mentioned, there are about 288 parking spaces, and that amount of parking sufficiently covers the minimum required for office use. However, it cannot support medical use beyond essentially what currently exists. There's about six or seven stalls per the minimum requirements. The applicant's fully aware of that situation and understands that future allowance of medical use would only be allowed if sufficient parking were identified to staff. The Planning Commission considered the applications during their November 20 meeting, and after conducting a public hearing and deliberating on the matter, the commission moved to unanimously recommend City Council approval of the proposed general plan amendment and zoning map amendment. I also wanted to point out to you that there was a letter received today from the attorney representing the neighboring property to the east, Arrowhead. And that will conclude my staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we do further discussion pursuant to FPPC rules I've discussed with the city attorney, I currently lease property immediately north of the subject property. The discussion with city attorney was if this would have any effect on my lease, then I need to recuse myself. Based on what I've been able to read and find, it will not have any consequences on the lease agreement, so I intend to go ahead and vote on the item.
Okay, thank you very much. And it's a self-determination. I think you got the best advice you can and made this determination, so appreciate the due diligence there. Councilmember Gross. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for this portion of it. Does any member of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public hearing and bring it back to the council. Is there any discussion that we need on this, or is it ready to vote? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Murphy?
Second.
Hasselbrink, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No, passes.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to read the title of the ordinance.
Thank you, city attorney.
I'd like to take it, please.
Yep, thank you.
I'd like to have the vote. Approved by the vote of the City Council is an ordinance entitled, "In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, approving zoning ordinance amendment 19-01 to change the zoning district for four parcels on 3.9 acres from Planlight Industrial to Commercial Professional Office at 4281 Catella Avenue, APNs 241-241-20, -21, -25, and -26." Applicant Perry Banner.
Okay, then we got to do the vote again, please, just to form. Okay, so council or Mayor Protem Murphy, still this?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Thank you. We're no knows, right? Okay, all right, thank you. Next we'll have is 12, is that right? 12A, this is, I guess, I'll turn it over to city attorney, I mean, city manager, if you would, please.
Honorable council members, I'm going to actually call on our soon-to-be-retired city engineer, Mr. Dave Hunt, to provide that report.
Well, thank you, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. Last month, we brought to you this approval for plans and specs to authorize some material street sign replacement program that we have in place, part of our CIP for this year. It's the first of three years to replace all the major street signs that we have in our street, like on Los Almavard, Catella, Ball, Cerritos. And the question came up is why are we not replacing them with lighted signs like we have out there now versus the new metal reflective signs and what the cost differential was? So in this staff report, we added in there the difference between the two, and there's approximately $1,200 difference between the two lights, where the lighted lights cost $1,200 more. We based this on bids that we have received for the lighted ones in another city that we are the city engineer in, and then we had bids for the actual buying the lights, I mean, buying the ones with just the metal reflectors on it. So we did that, and I'll give you a little bit about life expectancy. We also said that the metal reflective ones last 15 years, whereas the lighted ones will last approximately 10 years per their manufacturer. That means they won't be obsolete in 10 years, but they will show signs of age and, you know, could use some repair. Obviously, ours has been out there a lot longer than that. Few of them, like Florista, you can even barely see the word Florista on it, more with all the cracks and stuff out there. So we are following what a lot of cities have been doing lately, is going to all the metal reflective signs to save money, and we can replace them faster. We can do it in a three-year period versus a five-to-six-year period that it would normally, that it would take if we went the other way, and cost a lot more money. And so with that, city staff's making a recommendation to keep with the metal reflective signs that we propose, and let us go out to bid with the first project, which is on Los Almavard between Kella, Catella, and Cerritos, to get all those signs replaced. With that, I'll turn it back over to the council.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we'll just go ahead for public comments. It's not a hearing, but anybody, member of the public, wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comments on that, and then bring it back to So anybody wish to have any questions?
Just a comment, just a thank you to city staff. I know this was on the agenda last month, and we asked for more information with the estimates for the lighted signs, and it looks like the price is almost double. They won't last as long, and so from my perspective, the change that's being recommended makes sense. So thank you for that extra effort and information.
I also want to thank Dave. For 10 years, our, my first council meeting I ever came to was to complain about you.
Yeah, it was.
It was. You remember, I was really on fire that night, but we had paved the main street and it wasn't, it wasn't flat, it kind of made lakes. And my point was, if we can't pave the main street, what is going on here? And now I've been here 10 years later, found out. But thank you for putting up with me that night, for your explanation, and for all the work you've done for the city.
So it's Dave's fault that we're stuck with you?
Yeah, yeah, it really is.
Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Actually, a bulldozer blocked him in his street. He couldn't get out because he dumped a bunch of concrete in front of his exit, and he came in and yelled at everybody at City Council about me. I wasn't even there, but I sure now heard about it.
Okay, any other questions, discussion, banter? Dave, I do want to thank you for your years of service, too. I think I was still on the Traffic Commission when you came on board, so it's just been a really wonderful experience having you here. Okay, with that, is there a motion on this item?
I have one quick question. I'd just like to clarify. Are we talking a total of 25 signs?
Uh, yes. Twenty-five or twenty-seven.
Eight that are currently illuminated and 17 that are not.
Right.
Okay, is there a motion on this item?
Moved.
Second. Chirco, Murphy, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, passes. Okay. I think, is that it? No? Okay, we're going to go on to item 13A, special orders. So I prepared something for this outgoing one, and I hope I don't choke up and kind of lose it, so I'll try and stick to the reading of what I have to say here, so. So I just want to start off by friends, you know, family, friends, colleagues, fellow residents, shareholders in the great American dream that's embodied here in the city of, in our little jewel of a city, Los Alamos. I humbly thank you with the, you know, with the blessing and support of my wife, Judy. I started this hobby more than nine years ago. I served on the Traffic Commission and certainly then got elected, but I volunteered to serve our community, and somehow I ended up as an elected office as a politician, and who would have thought that from my perspective, such the introvert nerd that I am? But unfortunately, you know, change is a constant, and, you know, there's a season for everything in our lives, and my season in public service is at an end. I have tendered my resignation to the city clerk effective today, and this is necessary because of a recent promotion and the need for me to focus on my professional job. So I've been truly blessed to have experienced, you know, the highs and the lows of public service to gain friends, acquaintances, and even the detractors. I appreciate everybody, you know, that would come up here and talk and, you know, give their input, and it was tough. It's tough for people to talk in public in there, and it's kind of tough for us to take it up here, but that goes with the job, and I think certainly, I know I've done my very best to be the advocate, whether, you know, you agree with me or not, or whether I agree with you or not, I certainly tried to be that advocate. And we, you know, we always try to seek the best solutions that's possible within a complex state government structure that we have to live within. You know, this state government strips away the local control, and, you know, we don't like it, but we do the best we can in the environment that, and the cards that were dealt, the environment that we live in. You know, I wanted to say I appreciate all the council members that I've had the privilege to serve with, and I'm just trying to name them off in no particular order, but there's Jerry Gramahia, Marilyn Poe, and Marilyn, if you're watching, thank you. Ken Stevens, who has gone beyond, you know, here and far to Texas. Former mayor Troy Edgar, one-time nemesis, one-time ally, and certainly a good friend that's, you know, just politics makes for strange bedfellows, but what, I think we had to do what we had to do to get to where we're at for the city. Richard, thank you for your help and service. Dean, thank you. Shelley, thanks. Josh Wilson, who's who served and left, thank you. Mark, thank you. You've all helped me to make me a better human than I could have done by myself in being elected. I would also like to acknowledge and thank the past members that helped keep the city a special place, former city managers Jeff Stewart, Andrea Avery, Ray Cordner, Brett Plumley, and a special thanks to Les Johnson, who stepped up to keep us moving forward. Sandra Levin, city attorney, Carrie Reisman, and Michael Dought, thank you, past city attorneys and current, really good one. And Wendy, special place in my heart for you. Thank you for all the help you've given me. So as I step away from the dais and return to private life, I'd like to assure the public that the city is in a good place with a proactive council and staff that is continually seeking ways to sustain and keep our great city focused on the future. Thank you for the joy of being able to serve in God bless your city, our state, and our nation. With that, thank you. [applause] Glad to meet you, your hands, Richard. You're leaving?
Yes, I'm going to leave the dais at this point.
We get to say something nice about you first.
Okay, I'll let you do that.
Yeah, okay. You know, I didn't know this was coming a week ago, but I knew that there would be a transition, and I'd have to say some nice things about Warren, which was my pleasure, but I really wanted to start out and say, you know, what can you say about Warren that isn't in all the police reports already?
There are a few.
But that changed at nine o'clock on Sunday morning when Warren called me to say he was, he was moving. Now, at first, I thought he was kidding, because, I mean, who moves to Baltimore, really? You know, so I thought, he's got to be, this has got to be a joke. But then I started to reflect on Warren's time here and the amount of changes that have gone on. Last year, you saw Troy and Warren laughing about the old days. Well, as Dave Hunt's been here a while, and will attest, some of the old days were pretty ugly. 10 years ago, there wasn't the collegiality you see today. People actually watched the council for the comic value, and I mean, it was, it was a war. And I'm sure, Judy, there were times Warren came home and you said, what are you doing this job for? Because I know Troy said the same thing, Betty said the same thing. That all changed when Warren took over as mayor in 2012. There were some new council members at that point, but with Warren's leadership, we became the council today that can disagree, but disagree in a constructive way. That leadership continued this past year as Warren led the far-reaching economic discussions. These discussions included some unpopular topics, such as bankruptcy and other discussions, that were not well-received by some. However, the mayor had the foresight and courage to raise these issues, and in order to have a full discussion, you need to talk about everything, and that's what we promised the people through the Standing Committee, that we would consider every option to save money, and, you know, as you go through the options, some have a really strong response, but it's necessary that somebody has the courage to bring up those ideas. So I really want to thank you, Warren, for your leadership for the last nine years and your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Richard. Appreciate it. The pleasure serving with all of you.
Are we all getting a turn here?
Yes.
Sure, all right. I won't be as verbose as Richard, but if you are.
I'm eloquent.
Or eloquent, that's probably true.
That's a ticket.
Thank you for serving the community, Mayor Kusamoto, these last nine years. This is your second stint as mayor, and I appreciate all you've done for our city. I know we, just like any of us, we've had our disagreements, but I've never doubted your sincerity or that you're doing everything that you believe is in the best interest of Los Alamos, and that you follow, and you always follow your principles. So thank you for your service.
Yeah, they can speak. So I've known you long, long before. Our kids were teeny-tiny through NJB and LAYB and everything, and when you got into politics, I'm like, you're crazy. You know, it's like, I'd rather work in the snack shack. It's just way easier. But just watching you go through it, watching you go through the ugly election of 2010, I believe, where we were making the national news for our election, and it wasn't a good thing, and you survived. You've hired city managers and city attorneys and survived, and you are absolutely leaving the city in a better place than when you found it. You've always stood up for what you believed in, even if it was unpopular. You've always stood up for what you believed in, even if it was unpopular. Just because you don't know how to do anything else but stand up for what you believe in, and even as though we disagree up here, you just stuck to your guns and said, I, I might lose on this one, but this is what I believe, and, you know, there's, there's a lot to say for a man that, you know, isn't a politician at heart and, and sits up here and leads the city into some, some pretty ugly, ugly things that we have to solve. So I just want to thank you, I want to thank Judy, because I know it's a job for you, too, when you get to read about your husband in the paper and how horrible he is, and you're like, well, yeah, but, you know, you don't have to talk about it. And what your kids, you know, have, have grown up with, and it was definitely a family effort, and I just thank the both of you for mentoring me and always being a friend, even when we disagreed, and just wish you the best in Baltimore, surviving the winters and the politics back there, and just thank you, Warren.
Thank you, appreciate the kind words.
I'd like to, you know, I got, I got the heads-up phone call yesterday morning as well, and we had an opportunity to, to discuss for a little bit relationships and where we are as a city and where, where the future kind of lies. Quite honestly, back at the last election, Warren had mentioned that he may have an opportunity for an increase, and it was kind of a last-minute decision to go ahead and, and run. I'm, I'm happy for you, because I think the, the hopes that you had at that time that didn't quite come through have now come through. You're going to be moving up within your company, you're going to have more responsibility, albeit on the, on the East Coast, and, you know, I'm, I'm expecting you to keep in touch with us and keep letting us know of the good things that are happening as, as you journey on. Were you serious about three of the Tesla trucks?
Oh, yeah, that was an accident.
But, you know, it, it's been a pleasure serving with you. I know we've had differences over the, the years, but we have a good working relationship, and equally, I believe we have a good trust amongst each other, and, and that's important as we continue to do what we all feel is the best thing for our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Judy, good luck in Baltimore.
Another gavel. Two on the wall now.
Yeah, really.
Okay. A small token of our appreciation.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Just get a photo.
You can give that one to Judy, and the two of you can have dueling gavels.
All right, so I am going to, I, I will not participate in the next part, I think it would not be appropriate for the reorganization, so I do want to thank you all, and I'll be back to private life after this.
Maybe you can help their school district.
Keep your phone on.
I gotta go sign papers on the back.
My Al Haig moment now, you know? Actually, we're going to turn things over to Wendy.
So we're going to move on to item 13C, which is the annual city council reorganization. Elections for the office of mayor and office of mayor pro tem occur annually at the first regular meeting in December. The mayor and mayor pro tem serve at the pleasure of the city council. I will be conducting the elections, and each election shall be conducted by a roll-call vote of, of the city council. Nominations are considered in the order received. A second is not required for nominations, and the city charter does require a roll-call vote for each office. So at this time, I will open the floor for nominations of the office of mayor. After nominations, I will close the nominations, and a roll-call vote will be taken in order received. Are there any nominations for the office of mayor?
I'll nominate Richard Murphy.
Are there any further nominations? There being no further nominations, nominations are closed. Please vote for Richard Murphy for the office of mayor.
Aye.
I'm sorry, by roll-call vote. Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Councilmember Turco?
Aye.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Motion carried. Congratulations, Mayor Murphy.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the floor for nominations of the office of mayor pro tem. After nominations, I will close the nominations and perform a roll-call vote in the order received. Are there any nominations for the office of mayor pro tem?
I nominate Mark Turco.
Are there any further nominations? There being no further nominations, nominations are closed. Please vote for Mark Turco for the office of mayor pro tem by roll-call. I do Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Councilmember Turco?
Aye.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Motion carried. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem, Turco.
Thank you, thank you. No.
At this time, I'll turn the beanie back over to Mayor Murphy.
I'd like to point out that Shelley will still retain her seat as the last acting mayor, too. Like an emeritus seat, emeritus seat by this, at this point. Okay, we're going to go to the last item, the city council representation for other agencies. Is everybody pretty much happy where they are? I was thinking that perhaps we leave Vector open to see if the, the new person might, might be a fit there? If, if nobody has any objections. Do we have to fill that right now?
I would recommend you fill it now and reconsider the appointment when a new position is filled, just so that the vector control district can continue with their meetings.
So Mark, you'll continue there?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Okay. And then all the others will remain the same? Dean, you're good with Westcomb?
Yes.
Warren did not act as an alternate on anything, so we don't have to replace anything there. Do we have to make a formal motion for Shelley on fire, right?
Yes. Well, we can take the whole list of nominations as a whole, but we will need a roll-call in a second to carry it.
Well, I, I'd like to suggest that Les had mentioned the city manager appointment ad hoc to discuss things with the school district, and I was going to suggest that we, we let this new city manager, whoever that may be, get, get their feet wet before, this isn't, there's not going to be any meetings in the near future, so we'll just leave it open for now, if there's no objections. And three of us have said they'd be happy to serve, and then we'll see what the new person says, but we'll get it figured out. So you need a motion?
If I may, just to clarify, for the League of California Cities and city selection meeting, the new delegate will be you as the mayor and, or mayor pro tem Turco as the alternate.
Right, okay.
And that will be the only change.
Thank you.
And then a motion and a second.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? And we have to do something for the fire people?
That's part of the motion.
Okay, okay. So...
Mayor, do we need to put something on the agenda for an appointment for the vacant seat now? How, how does that work now for?
I was going to ask the city attorney that question. How do we proceed going forward?
The, the appointment to fill the, the absent seat now has not been agendized for discussion tonight, so we'll need to bring it back either at the next regularly scheduled meeting, or we could pull the council and try to set up a special meeting for that purpose.
To, to get started, we need to agendize it, or can we put out a request for applications? Or do we have?
See the clerk shaking her head? My, if, if what I'm saying is not consistent with your understanding, please let me know, but I think we need to bring it back as a discussion item to discuss and determine what the process will be for making that appointment.
Perhaps a special meeting where, where we can discuss how to proceed?
Would you be willing to facilitate that, like you have the other?
Certainly.
Okay.
So with, with that direction, I'll go ahead and pull the city council at a later time and try to develop a date that works for everyone on that item.
Okay. So with that, we will adjourn till our January meeting. Everybody have a great holiday. Thank you.